Good morning. Good morning. Quick peek at my calendar to see what else we were expecting. And then, Felisa, I know that you had mentioned you were only available for like a portion of like one of these meetings. So is there a time limit you have this morning?
No, I'm good. Got the full hour and a half.
Okay. Well, I guess we can get started. Can wait another minute or so for Kristen. She's the only other person I see in the calendar invite.
Mercedes, it's Amy. I just wanted to let you know Leah Seavey accepted this one late. So she was invited as well. I will send both of them a prompt right now and see if we can get them to join us.
Okay, great. Hang out and just sip coffee for another minute then. Start our meeting off slow. Did you do anything fun for Memorial Day weekend?
Worked in the garden, went to Memorial Day event, took lots of walks, couple naps. Not bad. How about you?
Well, Friday night, I got to see a little bit of the fireworks that they were doing on the waterfront.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, it was cool. I think I didn't remember that they did that at the beginning of the rose parade. So it was kind of cool. And then we did go out of town for the weekend, did some hiking at the Big National Forest.
So pretty.
It was gorgeous. Absolutely. And then we came back, we could see like the Ferris wheel and the lights and stuff along the waterfront. So it just felt like a party all weekend.
Good, I'm glad. I'm glad you chilled. It's good to know that you chill.
I do. I do, in fact, chill. Yeah, like the forest is great. It was very rainy. But it was still really nice. And so to be out and just hiking around, gorgeous.
What's the, there's a, there's a walk called like the Hall of Mosses. It's really pretty. It's a, it's pretty short, but it's just like, just thought of a movie.
It is very rainforesty. I think that's a lot of fun to see just like how we were by the staircase area and Lena Lake. And just like huge rivers and big giant boulders and like you just kind of sit there and like with these huge trees and these huge boulders, you're just like, how long has all this been here? How did it get here?
We live in one of the most beautiful corners of the world.
Agreed, for sure. Um, okay. Well, I kind of want to jump in a little bit and I think we can catch folks up as they join. So for your benefit, we can, we can kind of go through this one of two ways. One is I have kind of a list of some recommendations along with some notes that I got from the first meeting. And we can kind of go through those and you can kind of give me your, your take, you know, your reaction response to those adjustments you'd make to the way that it's kind of currently worded or framed. Or if you don't want to be like polluted by my ideas first, we can start with yours. Like what are, what are the things that are top of your list, top of mine for you? And then I can share with you anything I have that might be in addition to what you share.
I mean, you know, I brought a list, so.
I'm glad, I'm glad to hear it.
Let's see. So if it's helpful, I'll just jump right in.
I'm going to mute myself so I can take notes and you don't hear my clicking.
And maybe I'm allowed to send this to Amy to then send to you because it's all written down. It's in a Google Doc, so. So let's see, important to Northwest Health Foundation. So I divided that into process and wages. So regarding processes, one of the things that's been mentioned is the amount of money that requires legal review. And I'm genuinely curious if that's something, it, my understanding is $250,000 and I'm, I'm curious if, when's the last time that got updated? Is it, could change it? I know that politically that might not be very popular, but I think it's worth at least understanding in a deeper way. Accountability. Well, I guess this comes later, but some sort of accountability and tracking around like what the recommendations are and how they're going. Moaloma County did something similar for the animal shelter. And I thought it was super helpful and I'll put a link here. Several agencies have shared about the kind of these groups that they have that inform their work and would love to see like something across us agencies, so inter-agency community of practice.
If I could just have you pause really quickly. I just want to say hello, Leah, welcome. So we are just jumping right in. Felisa has a list, so we're, we're going to kind of like listen through her list of like what are, what priorities and ideas that she had. And then happy to take yours. I'm also happy to share kind of what I've kind of gathered so far, if you'd rather have something to kind of react and respond to. And if you hear anything that Felisa shares that you want to kind of double down on or ask additional questions about, please feel free to jump in. And so we had just gone through one, which was like increased, you know, the, there's a 250,000 minimum requirement, or is it maximum, depending on how we word it, where the DOJ review has to kick in? Should that be evaluated to increase it? And then I heard you say, Felisa, you were starting to talk about an accountability metric, accountability. And I'm wondering if you could just say what you think that mechanism should be, because I think our, our charge is to make a recommendation on what the ongoing monitor, monitoring should be. So can you say a little bit more about what you'd like to see in something that's like on, that's monitoring the recommendations as they go forward?
Yeah, I mean, I would just like, my vision is, you know, I, I, six months a year after we submit our recommendations, be able to look at something and see where it's at and if things aren't going well or aren't moving forward, how come? You know, I imagine an agency like NAO would, would want something like that to be able to keep people informed around like, hey, there was this task force, they made these recommendations for the entire sector. And, and here's how it's going. And oh gosh, you know, this area is red. Contracting hasn't been improved at all. No one's touching it. Who do we reach out to about that? And who do we, how do we help bring attention to that?
And who do you imagine would be responsible for that?
I would, my uneducated guess would be DAS.
Well, I think it's a recommendation, right? Like who do you think should be responsible for it?
I'm going to go with DAS, but I, they might push back and I'm all for that. Maybe, I mean, would the governor's office make sense?
So one of the things that I have in my notes as a recommendation is like an office of nonprofit partnership that would probably be somewhere like in DAS or the governor's office. And I imagine like it would, that would be an entity that could do this. I mean, that would require standing up a new entity. So it's a little more complicated than say, you know, calling out an agency. And I think DAS is an appropriate one to ask if it's the right place, given that a lot of the training and templates, you know, kind of live with them. So I think that that's, DAS is an appropriate recommendation.
I think I mentioned inter-agency community of practice. Moaloma County did a report about their contracting process. Which is super wonky and I got confused. But the major takeaway is this process isn't working for staff or the nonprofits. And so I just think there might be something that we can learn from that. One more thing regarding process is that I at least was confused in the presentations about insurance and what funds can be used to cover insurance requirements. And so I feel like there needs to be clarity on that across agencies. I mean, the level of confusion is concerning, right? I mean, so many different agencies are. Yeah, I just, I have so much. I feel like I've learned so much about how our nonprofits are navigating this very unclear space. So clarity across agencies is sort of a big theme of like rules of how to do admin and yeah, what can, what can, can, can insurance be covered by the contract, things like that?
I have a. For that one. Yeah, no. And for that one, so for the insurance costs that are. So I think there's part of the question there is like, how much of your insurance is say covered by part of your admin rate? It's just kind of like regular standard business. And then there was like, what are the additional insurance requirements that are unique to a particular contract or grant agreement? And to what degree are the state funds used to cover those? That sound right?
Yeah, and just clear guidelines for a nonprofit to be like, okay, you're requiring this, so you're going to cover that cost, right? Or if you're not, let's just get, let's be super clear.
Anyone?
So wages, really important to Northwest Health Foundation. So something like an industry council, worker standards board, wage board, it's, there's all different kind of language used across the country. But the Oregon Legislature actually looked at this in 2023 for the long-term care industry. So it's not a foreign concept. It's something that has been discussed within the legislature before. I don't have a lot of expertise. There's people in this state that do have expertise on this topic, including Janet Bower, including Janet Bower. So but I, something like that, that could be setting a requirement of what wages should be and a way to, for them to influence contracts would be great.
For that one. Yes. So that one came up in our, our last committee meeting as well. And one of the, when I like the further recommendations on the recommendation was, should it be based on certain types of duties and certifications, like state recognized certifications? And not necessarily like position titles, recognizing that across nonprofits. You know, we, we use language differently and how you might call a position something different, but it might actually be similar to another position that's called something different. Would that create, would that make it too difficult to create kind of that prevailing wage or wage board wage standard? Are we talking about any nonprofit job regardless of what it is? Like what are your thoughts kind of on that? Like how to identify which jobs? Because I also use the example of like the preschool, because we were at Delk, they said they have minimums for preschool teachers that are already set in their calculation. So you're, to your point, there are multiple examples, I think, of when it's connected to a certain body of work. But when we're looking kind of across the nonprofit sector, like how do you imagine identifying which positions or roles or what, like what the wage board is taking to establish those minimums?
I think my somewhat uninformed vision was around specific industries within the sector, so like human services. Which is what's coming up the most in these conversations. Like I think, like I, you know, the, I, I don't want to. Our arts groups are experiencing something different, right? Than folks that are doing homeless outreach services, vaccine distribution. And so, I guess I, I mean, I would love to see something focus on human services. Yeah, and I guess this is complicated and you know, one of the questions that I would hope that I, that I sent months ago, hoping to be answered by DOJ was like, would it even be legal to say that a contract with the state can insist upon what everyone is getting paid? Or is it just what the contract, the staff, the contract is covering? Like what does the state of Oregon get to dictate? So again, I mean, there are people with a lot of expertise in this area. You know, I think there could be something like a pilot. We are, you know, across the state, homeless crisis, mental health crisis. Folks hurting from drug use. There's no shortage of opportunities for pilot projects focusing on, on these specific contracts. And considering the governor's priorities, I, I think it's ripe for opportunity. Would love to see COLA increases year after year within contracts. I don't know if that can be insisted upon. I mean, we heard, you know, that state agencies get COLA increases. And and that isn't passed on to their nonprofit contracts. So it's, it's just for staff. And so I, that was concerning. And then I have a little section that says little things that make a big difference. 15% floor for admin. Follow what the feds say. That should be probably at the top. Just, it's just got to happen. And some language around that if a state agency is taking a percentage of that, like if they take a percentage, that's fine. That's a different issue, but they, I don't think it's okay for them to take that percentage from what the nonprofit is entitled to, to do their work. So if they need 5%, then they need 5%, but that doesn't mean that the nonprofit gets 10. And so I think protecting that 15% admin for nonprofits is critical. And OHA did mention that they need additional data analysts to be able to be more efficient and quicker with their work. And so I just wanted to uplift that. And I only have a few other ideas, but I want to hear from other people.
Okay. Leah, do you want to go ahead and jump in?
Sure. I loved a lot of the things that you said. And I, did you meet with Philip and discuss the, the list of items that NAO put forward?
I, I haven't seen what NAO put forward.
Oh, okay.
I think they shared a little bit with us in a public comment. They had, like I think when Jim came, they also submitted something in writing. There's only probably about like two pages or so. It was pretty concise.
Yeah, it's 10 items. So I'm just going to list their headings. Fair wages, adjustable funding levels, sufficient administrative rate, timely payments, payment process, advanced payments and bridge funding, simplification of application procedures and timelines, flexibility with contract and grant terms, multi-year contracts and grants, and centralized nonprofit grants management, such as technical support and capacity building. And so those were in the forefront of my mind when I was thinking about priorities. If I were sort of to think of the big buckets as opposed to the drill down details, then in the work that I do with nonprofits specifically in the domestic and sexual violence services field. Timely payments is a big one. Often nonprofits don't get reimbursed for months. And so then that sort of leads right into getting paid prior to the commencement of the work rather than the reimbursement process. And simplification of the grant, the grants themselves. So any nonprofit is going to have more than just a couple of grants in order to really achieve their mission. And so having each grant, let's say, let's say you have five grants. Each one has its own timeline, its own set of requirements for what to report back on. All of those details, they're all different. So the more grants you have, the more administrative money you're going to need. So that feeds right into administrative funds are inadequate. And if there were multi-year grants, then it would help alleviate some of that burden. If you have one grant application for three years is a lot easier to manage than having to write a renewal grant every year. And I liked what you said about sort of baking into grants and contracts in COLA increases. And the well, we talked about the administrative rate. Oh, bridge funding. So when there's a gap from one grant period to the next would be really helpful to nonprofits especially. And I'm sort of speaking from, or maybe even beyond, on behalf of the smaller rural nonprofits that struggle more with being able to provide funding in between while they're waiting for funds to come in, while they're waiting for grants to be, for to be reimbursed, all of those pieces. And so I know a number of nonprofits that have to get lines of credit with their bank just to bridge that gap, which seems really unfair if it's a nonprofit that isn't able to do that. And the technical support piece, I can only speak to my field. But I think that the grant monitors in the government fields are sorely lacking in their sort of understanding of what happens within nonprofits and their idea of assistance is sorely lacking. And I don't know about other nonprofits, but I've been in the nonprofit field for 20 something years and I've never seen the, the rate of sort of what, what would I call it? Heavy-handedness on the, on the side of the government grant monitors in regards to inflexibility. And my guess is, is that, you know, they're being, you know, the they're being monitored more closely by the feds. And so their reaction is to then monitor even more closely their nonprofits that they have provided funding to. And so while that is totally understandable, it's not very transparent. What the government granting agencies are pressured to do or however that looks, that they think they're transparent, transparent. Maybe, I've even had grant monitors sort of be proud of the fact that they think they're transparent, but in reality, they aren't. So that's super frustrating. And so I would, I would put that on the list as well.
So I, one of the things that you said sparked, I think, a little bit of a question for me and also what came up in our, one of our previous meetings around. I think both the technical assistance, but also kind of like this tension between consistency and flexibility. Right? So like we, we want, we definitely want more consistency within agencies and across agencies on how they're doing some of this work so that, you know, we're not trying to turn in like six different templates, but we can try to use one, right? But if there is just one, then that also means that you're kind of giving up some flexibility because now I can't use my own, I have to use yours. And one of the things like we kind of talked about is the tension between if a state agency is kind of changing its templates and process every 12 to 24 months. As a nonprofit, you're very disincentivized from changing any of your processes to match theirs, because theirs are not going to be the same in 12 months. And it would take too much work to try to update your own process to match essentially a moving target. So if we want flexibility, which means I kind of want my contract manager to meet me where I am a little bit more. But I also want consistency because I don't want them to be changing what they're doing. How do I balance that? How do I find the right level of flexibility with also wanting to see more consistent, you know, timelines and reporting, contract language being used, templates and reporting expectations? contract language being used, templates and reporting expectations? So like, what is your reaction to kind of hearing that question?
I think there's a happy medium between the two. And I think there's a related issue that factors in that I didn't mention. And that is that when a nonprofit, let's say they have turnover, and turnover causes chaos, especially at the upper levels. And so then the nonprofit is sort of in a little bit of sort of internal trouble because, you know, the person who does their grant reports isn't there anymore. And so then they're way behind. So the funder then only steps in when it's mission critical and that nonprofit is already way underwater. Instead of offering like early on support or partnering them, you know, as a mentor with another nonprofit or whatever that might look like to help them get back on track, they wait until they're about to have their funding pulled because they're way behind on their grant reports. And then they step in and sort of put down the hammer and say, you have to do this by this time. And so then that makes it really tough for really great technical assistance to happen because then, you know, you're sort of chasing the emergency and not helping them to understand the process. Let's say they've got a new executive director who also does the grant report writing. So that person then is, you can't learn in an atmosphere of ketchup. So then they're stuck. I work part-time as a consultant and I see it every single day. This stuckness that happens when they're so far behind that you can't teach them grant reporting while they're in, you know, put out the fire mode. And so they're at a complete disadvantage. So I don't know, I don't know if that partially answered what you said or not, but I think it's a multifaceted issue.
Yeah, no, I think that's helpful. I think, you know, one of the other notes I took from what you were saying was like, some predictability and upfront communication about what's being monitored to improve transparency. I like the peer support learning, right? Like thinking of our, our government partner as also a convener. Like, we can be learning from each other if those kind of opportunities are provided.
Yeah, and at least with the grant monitors that my field works with, you know, their hearts are in the right place. But they think that training is watching one of their canned webinars and not this hands-on thing. And then at the same time, they say, well, if you've got any questions, just ask. But, and I think that this was expressed at a previous meeting, but the grantee doesn't want to sort of clue in their funder that they're struggling with X, Y, and Z because it's sort of, you know, I don't know, it sort of gives the snake a view of what the snack is. And it's not, it's not of human nature to sort of reveal oneself that way. And so it lends itself to then the nonprofit just sort of sinking deeper.
Ooh, I felt that. Yeah, because I have felt that, I think, towards the end of our presentations and feeling like for, that there's so much emphasis on controlling risk and compliance. It's kind of like, we've got three priorities: risk, compliance, and outcomes. And it feels very clear to me that these systems and structures are meant to sacrifice outcomes in favor of maintaining control over risk and compliance. Like, it's okay to not house people as long as you didn't spend money you weren't supposed to spend, and you didn't spend it in a way you weren't supposed to spend it. If everyone's still homeless, we're fine. Like, that's what it feels like when listening to some of these processes. When for us, it's like, house the people at, you know, by any means necessary. And so then I do start to get afraid, am I spending money wrong? Because my goal is to house the person. And now I'm worried about getting in trouble for housing them wrong, you know? And, and that kind of stress means we're really not in alignment. And that feeling of like, I feel like I've heard, I heard from a lot of the presenters that they really want this feeling of partnership and that they really try to lead with that foot of partnership. But when it boils down to, my main priority though is to oversee and make sure, and make sure I catch any problem that you created as a partner, that doesn't feel like partnership. And that doesn't feel like growth. And that doesn't feel like trying to chase the outcomes. It really feels like trying to chase the risk. I have definitely felt that in a lot of this work. And I think that's a tension I'm not sure what to do with because it feels very pervasive and also very unsaid and very unspoken that that is the goal.
Yeah, and along those same lines, I've seen small, I call them programs, but nonprofits that have a new executive director. And because there was a desk review, and I'll explain that in a second, of their grant situation already on the books before the previous director left, that even though the new executive director has only been there a month, we're gonna do the desk review anyway. And the desk review is really an audit, but they have asked me repeatedly to not call it an audit, even though it is. It's like three solid pages of checkboxes where you have to supply policies and procedures and copies of this and copies of that. It's an audit. But so that inflexibility, nope, we're good, we have it scheduled. We're gonna do it anyway. And, you know, the fact that you've only been there a month, be damned.
Mercedes, I just want to thank you for saying what you just said. And I, I know that our, like, executive report will only be two pages, our executive summary. But I hope there's some narrative that can mention this tension. And, you know, I, and I've, just since I know you and I serve on other committees, because this has been a big topic with SHS where the dollars are brand new. And there's, there's this unwillingness to take any risk. Like, I mean, I'm trying to remember what I said in a meeting, but, you know, it's, it feels as if it's, it's more important not to be on the cover of the newspaper about, you know, misusing $10,000 than it is about keeping people housed. And this, I don't know, I, I appreciate you calling it out because it's such a point of tension. And I, I'm not naive, like, I get it. And like, at what, at what detriment to the communities that we serve? This is, this is really serious. And I hope it's part of the recommendations as, you know, something to reflect on. And at what, at what point do we acknowledge that we're actually causing more harm?
And, and part of it is like, is also, I think this is so deeply, this attitude, this tension, this, you know, whatever we want to call it, is not like, it's not like specific to Oregon, right? Like, and it's not even specific to like our systems. It's like, if we take it really big lens, it's really embedded in racism, like this fear of helping the wrong people and helping people too much. And that, I feel like, has been, especially in the human services space and education spaces, like, it, it is the, it is the fight between the government and the people is, you know, who are the right people to be serving and what is the right way to serve them? And so like, I definitely think that it's something we can call out, but I also don't want it to feel like, like Oregon has created this problem. Like, this is, this is something that's much deeper than, you know, this one, one set of body of work. Kristin, welcome.
Hi. Sorry, John and I had our, our wires crossed about which one of us was supposed to be here. And I just want to mention to, you know, one of the things that government is trying to avoid is fraud. And, and I think that that is, you know, an important piece to call out because we are a target for fraudsters often. And one of the things that we're trying desperately to make sure doesn't happen with money is that we don't end up with millions of dollars out the door to someone who is misusing it. And I totally hear what you're saying about, you know, it feels more important to, to make sure that the wrong people don't get the money than it does to house the people. And that is not the way that it should be. And is super frustrating, and I can completely understand that. I, I do think though, that that is one of the things that your government partners are always looking for. So to the extent that all the great minds in this group have thoughts about different ways that we could do, like, look out for that thing that we're pretty conscientious about, I think that, that that would be super well received from all of you to, to the government side. Because there are a lot of lawsuits that happen on a very regular basis about people who have misused grant funding. Like, there are, there are probably a billion dollars or close to it in Oregon alone right now going on investigations for fraud. So like, it's not, and, and I just pulled that number out of my head. So like, please don't go out and quote that everywhere. But it's, it's significant, right? Like, there, there is a significant amount of fraud out there. And, and we desperately want to make sure that the money gets to the right people and actually gets to people who can utilize it and that we haven't inadvertently, like, funneled a billion dollars again to, to someone, you know, house in the Caymans and house in, in Italy and all of those kinds of things because that's equally terrible and means more people did not get housed that should have been housed. So, you know, to the extent that, that nonprofits can understand that that's really what government is looking for when they do all these desk reviews slash audits and those kinds of things, like, maybe there is a better way to do it. And I think we would be open to hearing that from all of you about like, how do we, how do we find these indicators if we're not doing what we're doing?
Well, I, I just want to reiterate something I said that sort of lends itself to answering what, what you just brought up. Because I think we're all cognizant of wanting to be good stewards of the funding because it's our money. We, we paid into this money, right? So there is a real desire to make sure that it is spent in a good manner. Shoot, and then I just lost my brain link to what I was gonna say about that. It'll come back to me, sorry.
And I think that's absolutely true, right? For the ones that are, that are good actors. You know, we get, and, and one of the things that is a real struggle for government to work through sometimes is new nonprofits, right? We get new nonprofits in and trying to figure out whether this is a real legitimate new nonprofit or a, a suddenly appeared for a pile of money and will then disappear with said pile of money. You know, that, that's, it's a real thing that happens every day.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and I think there's far more government waste in our funding, our funding, our taxpayer funding, than, than, I guess, I shouldn't say far more. I'm more worried about that than I am the fraud element. However, I've seen it in my own field. So it's, you're absolutely right. It's totally a real thing. Maybe what I was gonna say before was that one of the problems that I see is that, at least in my field, which is the domestic and sexual violence services field, is that the grant monitors are slow to sort of jump in and find out what the problem is until things are sort of mission critical. And then they, you know, put down the hammer to, you know, pull funding and all these pieces when they probably saw what was about to happen because, you know, grant reports were six months late. That's a kind of an indicator that something's going on. And, you know, instead of really earnestly trying to help the nonprofit sort of figure out what the problem is, they let it go on until they're ready to pull the funding. And they don't reach out to technical assistance people or consultants or other people, mentors, who can help that nonprofit sort of get right their ship, but wait until it's like they gotta, it's like, almost like they wait for a gotcha to happen.
So I have a few more things on kind of my, I guess I'll call it my global list. So I'm wondering, one, do you all have any other individual things you want to kind of speak to first? If not, I can go through some of the things that are on my list that haven't come out yet in our discussion and get kind of your take on those.
I have three more things. So Mary Ann had asked, encouraged us to read the, the list of recommendations from New York City. And so I took directly from that. And so they had a couple of ideas that I liked. So explore the feasibility of reimbursing, reimbursing interest on private loans borrowed to cover operating expenses, commit to maintain the indirect cost rate, and then create contingency funding in human services contracts. And I'll also add, I think, and I think Leah mentioned this, is the timeliness of getting paid. And I think there should be interest, interest charged to the state for late payments. And general training opportunities for, for staff. I feel like many have mentioned like, that like, everyone has the same, anyone who does procurement does a training. When is the last time that was updated? Is everyone receiving the same one? Thanks, Mercedes.
The piece I was gonna add is that there is a huge vacuum and lack for really qualified bookkeepers who have expertise in nonprofit bookkeeping. Nonprofits that I work with, this is, this is an issue that lends to problems with reporting, problems with reporting accurately, timeliness. I mean, it all feeds back to, if you've, if you've got a bookkeeper who doesn't really know nonprofit bookkeeping, it's going to cause a multitude of problems. And I've worked with a number of nonprofits who have had a heck of a hard time finding competent bookkeepers who have an expertise in this area. Even some agencies who call themselves bookkeeping agencies and say that they're proficient in nonprofit sort of have huge gaps in their knowledge. And I see this as a problem that then, it's like a spider web that then causes problems in all of these other areas. Because if you don't have that kind of foundation, then it screws you in a whole bunch of different ways. And so one potential remedy for that is, is there a process for, I don't know, offering scholarships for people who are entering into college to find an expertise or area in nonprofit bookkeeping management? You know, something that incentivizes for people coming into the job market to choose that.
Okay. So I'll go through now a couple of things that, well, I think most of them now, I think most of them have come up. But, so I think that last set of things I was hearing fall into one of these, one of the first recommendations, well, it's not first recommendation, it's not really in order, sorry, at the top of my piece of paper. So to have a nonprofit stakeholder group review the DAS handbook, templates, training materials to identify opportunities to update for relevancy and build more shared and common language, training for state staff, for state staff and process, process language that should include how to for state staff and process language that should include how to offer and engage in technical assistance, how to write mission and values aligned outcomes, how to establish effective partnership, as well as risk and compliance processes that align with nonprofit business practices. In our, one of our other meetings, someone brought up making sure this kind of has like a dual purpose, that this is both then an ability for nonprofits to better understand what the government has to have in its processes, as well as helping those government partners understand what nonprofits have to have in their processes and finding those places where they can match. There might need to be some special consideration for first time applicants, folks who've never, who are doing like their first state contract or grant, but having this kind of stakeholder space where that information is being shared more consistently. We talked, we already talked about COLA and inflation adjustments, and they should be part of projecting the next fiscal year budget. So instead of that being something that's done, it sounds like right now it's kind of, the department submit their current service level, which does not include any additional information from their contractors or grantees who are going to roll over on their increase in costs, right? So they don't, they don't solicit that information, so it's not part of their current service level modeling. And then any kind of COLA or inflation that they do get, it's also not considering the grants and contracts, right? Because we heard that routinely, that's not something that's passed on. So I mean, even the calculation of what that is, isn't including the grants or contracts. So starting to kind of flip that a little bit and making it part of current service level calculation to ask your grantees and contractors, all right, we intend to move this forward for another biennium. How much is your next two years going to cost to maintain outcomes? If they want reduced outcomes, to say, we want a 50% reduction in outcomes, what would that cost be, right? And making that part of how they do their budgeting, this would, you know, be much earlier than the fiscal, than doing it July 1, right after. Now we know how much money we have, now tell us how much work you can do. But actually trying to make that part of the the calculation as they're building. Fifteen percent to minimize is like on the sheet like three different times funding on a stick. The wage boards, I think where we're, where I'm kind of landing with that is that it's almost, it's almost a recommendation to set up a new table to build a recommendation because there's so much work involved in that. I don't love that, and I would love to kind of get more specific about it if we can. But right now, it's kind of how the language is feeling, is that like, you know, which positions or which certifications, which subsector, are we considering? And then how to establish those. I think the thing I really like about this, though, is something that came up in an earlier meeting where we started talking about kind of cost of living, right? And that like folks who live in the urban area versus folks who live in the non-urban areas, like the cost of living is different. So then these like wage minimums should be different. And I actually kind of took a step back from that and was like, I don't, I actually don't like that. I don't like the idea of saying that a case manager in rural Oregon deserves to be paid less because it's cheaper to live in their area. This should be about value for the work. And somebody who is maybe working in a less populous area might actually need to be paid more to incentivize them to be able to maybe take on a larger caseload. Maybe they're the literally the only case manager because the population doesn't require multiple folks in their role. So they are, they have no community of practice, they are the community who is doing the practice, and they actually need more resources to support their ability to do that work. So I think I like the the wage board kind of concept as well as a way of getting us out of this. You know, well, how do we just make sure you can make rent? Because that feels like just the lowest of low bars. But instead, what is the value of this work? Which would then we need to kind of figure out how to break out like those certain types of duties or certifications, those certain types of roles, most commonly used positions and contracts, which is another data point we don't necessarily have. So just thinking about like, how do we get that recommendation down to something that isn't just like a recommendation for another body to take a look at something? Because that feels like it just pushes out a timeline for when that would happen for years and years, right? So that's my struggle with that one. But I feel like I've heard a couple of different ways that like, we need some sort of structure that would set minimums. Any thoughts there before I move on to anything else?
I'm glad you brought that up because I've been pretty vocal on calling BS on the fact that it seems like it's more expensive to live in an urban area. I live in a rural area and I work a few days a month in Portland. And everything costs more where I live, with the exception of purchasing a home. That costs way more in Portland than it does in my area. Everything else, gas, food, electricity, everything costs me more than it does when I'm working in Portland. So so I fully support what you suggested, Mercedes. I think that that's way more accurate.
Thanks, Mercedes. I feel like one of, I just, I want to understand where you're towards better. Because I feel like we're going to make this recommendation and so much of, many of our recommendations tie directly to expertise, lived experience. And yeah, and I I hear what you're saying around like how this might be like a recommendation to explore a wage board. I guess I'm mindful of like, in our next couple of meetings, could we try to learn more? So we can make the most informed recommendation possible. That's what's on my mind.
Yeah, absolutely. Another thing on the list, I think we talked this about this a little bit, was having a single statewide database platform that allows organizations to kind of like create a profile, and that contains all the minimum required information that would be needed that any agency might ask for for funding opportunities. And so kind of like, Kristin, kind of getting to your point around like, really thinking about these, these very real risks of fraud, that if there was a singular space where all nonprofits had like essentially phase one of vetting, where you have to have your mission, your vision, your demographics, your services offered, your board, your staff, your 990, your insurance coverage, or like all of these things that we know, both procurement and program ask for separately, and they also ask for it in every single division of the agency, and each agency also asks for it, right? Like, we all, we know that that's something that we're required to submit. So then that, and I think about something like the, like the Workday platform that the state uses for jobs, right? You build a profile where you upload your resume and all of your like credentials. And then when you want to apply for a job, you're only answering the questions that are specific to the job. You're not uploading your resume all over again, all your certifications all over again. This would be the same sort of thing. Because right now, what we're hearing is that every single agency has different ways for how they're collecting information from grantees and contractors. They're also storing it in a way that is not shareable between procurement and program, let alone outside of their agency. And now state agencies are also buying products from vendors that are not operable across each other. So now each agency is going to be spending, you know, their department funds to have a system that is closed and that is not also being cross-vetted by other providers. So like, if you had a single database system where each organization had a profile, if like, say, at the OHA, somebody, you know, started, we started seeing like those delays in grant reporting, it's something that departments could actually report to each other. So then if that same nonprofit applied for something with DHS, they say, oh, they also have a contract with OHA, and there's a flag here for something, right? And it starts to make it something that is not dependent on a single contract manager catching things, but is part of a system of review and a system of engagement for that information. And then for the nonprofit, it should make it easier for you because then you essentially always have a pre-application. And it's your job to make sure like, once your new 990 comes out or your new insurance is updated, that you're updating that so that you can then apply for individual grant opportunities. But then your application is only for that specific thing. And I'm not calling up my grant manager to copy and paste four pages of the same stuff we submit every single time. But we're actually spending time answering the questions that are specific to the body of work that we're applying to. And then with that was also, you know, should we have a standard open period for these applications? It seemed to like, from the different presentations, that open period for a procurement was anywhere between like 30 and 50 days. Should we have just like a standard open periods that anytime a new application opens, all nonprofits know you have X number of days to get your applications in? That timeline could probably be shortened if we had some sort of state database. I think it's longer without it because of all the duplication of information that has to be submitted. We talked about like the consistent tracking of payment. So just to start there, since it was, it also came out in the presentations that there isn't necessarily tracking of payments, they don't even know how far behind they might be. That's not something that's given light, it's not like a KPI that people are working towards. So if they're six months behind on 85% of their contracts, they don't even know. And so having some consistent tracking of that within the agencies. And then I think you've mentioned Felicity, some kind of what I called an inconvenience fee to be paid to the nonprofit. And tying that rate, like whatever that can be, inconvenience fee would be, tying that to the rate of interest that the nonprofit is taking on debt in order to float the government payer. And then I made your note that like, or that interest is just an allowable expense. If you, if you're doing line item budgeting, then you you get to have a line for interest. So any debt that you have to take on in order to manage this contract is now an eligible expense on your, on your contract. Or, or if all that sounds like a mess, you can do advanced payments. If you did advanced payments, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have this issue with an inconvenience fee because you would have, you know, either 12 months or quarterly scheduled payments that go out, and then you'd be collecting receipts and invoices to match back up with the amount of funds being provided. This would be more of a shared risk model, so maybe something, you know, only a more established organization would would even feel comfortable doing. Because if at some point, the amount of receipts and invoices you have turned in do not add up to the amount of advanced payment that you got, you either then owe your, you owe money back to the state, or you owe more service back to the state with no additional costs that you can kind of bring in, right? So that's part of the shared risk, is that you get the benefit of having the funds upfront, so you're not taking on debt. You can hire that staff, get to work. But then if at the end of it, you haven't actually performed up to the dollar amount, you then owe that money back, or you owe service. Required public facing guides, this is a little bit towards that transparency thing, that like, if you use templates, if you are allowed to negotiate for different pieces of your contract, if technical assistance is part of it, how to escalate problem solving and payment issues, so that all of that has to be published and public facing. So that if a nonprofit is trying to decide, do I want to apply for something with, you know, this department? I can now see, oh, these are the templates that they require. This is what's negotiable and what's not negotiable in their contracts. This is the kind of technical assistance they provide. You know, I have a much better understanding of what my partner is bringing to the table before I'm even applying for anything in their, in their agency. And then we did talk about, I think, consistent, using more consistent language on audits. And then there was the Procurement Council or Communities of Practice across agencies. And then Felicity, I heard you say, so one, I think the recommendation is like that each agency should have this practice. But then I heard you say that this should also be a cross-agency practice. Yeah. I think that's it. Any other thoughts about anything that came up there or anything that's missing? Go for it.
Love all of this. You know, you mentioned something around templates and public facing and what isn't negotiable. To me, that really ties to a database. Because you mentioned like that the nonprofit would know what they're getting into. But I think maybe with a database, the state agency would know what they're getting into, right? With a nonprofit, and I think that seems fair. Around shared risk and understanding, so I, I love everything I'm hearing. I hope, I had sent this to Amy and I'll include it in the chat. But this is a helpful example of a list of recommendations that have been made. And I, let me get you the right page number, because I have so many tabs open. So on page 44 of the document, it talks about timeframe, feasibility and cost. And I think it's a really helpful breakdown, especially for the task force to understand like, some of these ideas will take longer than others. And then it also makes me think about one of the questions I had asked that I, I hoped that DOJ answers at some point is around like, like, is it even legal for the state of Oregon to pay an inconvenience fee? Like, is that, can they do that? Or is that just, oh, no, we can't do it? So I, I think also legal feasibility of some of these potential ideas would be helpful to understand. And to get everyone with like realistic expectations of like, yeah, some of this might come up in the long session in 2025, and some of this might be 27. So thank you, Mercedes, for all your work on this.
Leah, any other thoughts or anything else coming up for you?
Oh, I just have some sort of in the weeds, if you will, issues. And so I say that because it might be just specific to my field, but things like inconsistency with requirements around background checks for staff. Get my notes here. Moving money within grants. You can, you know, some grants allow you to move money around within categories and some don't. And they each have a different amount of a threshold of how much you can move. And, you know, you don't really know that stuff unless you, you know, go back and look at your grant contract and look for the details. And sometimes you won't even find that, that in there. Oh, and then the big one is shared costs. I see this problem a lot, shared costs where they just divide administrative costs across all grants. You can't do that, it's actually, well, I've seen it written in every grant contract in my field. I'm assuming it's across the board for nonprofits, but it's another one of those issues with bookkeepers not knowing nonprofit.
Can you say more about that?
Yeah, so let's say you have your overhead of health insurance and, I don't know, IRA and maybe one other sort of elected deductible for your staff. And your bookkeeper divides it evenly amongst all of your grants and bills it monthly to each grant, which, which isn't allowed. So basically, write into the grant how much of those overhead costs are going to be covered by that grant for that person, and you bill accordingly what the actual cost is for that quarter, or however you do your reporting, instead of dividing it evenly amongst all the months, which is easier for the bookkeeper. But it's not actually accurate.
And is that a calculation happening on the funder side? Or is this, is this more of like a sector, a sector issue?
Well, I don't know if it's a sector issue. It's certainly a sector issue in my field. But the funders have an expectation that that the cost will be actual and not accumulated and then divided.
Okay. So this isn't something that the funder is imposing, like wanting to see, you know, I want to see a consistent amount every month, even if it actually is variable, like that's not, it's not a stipulation you're seeing on the funder side. That's more of a concern on the That's more of a concern on, on the, uh, the bookkeeper that organizations might be using?
Just the opposite. So the funder wants to see the actual costs. The bookkeeper wants it to be easy and just have it be the same number across all grants for all people. Or, you know, sort of however that works out to, to accumulate and divide. Um, and so funders, the grant requirements, uh, it has to be actual costs, not just accumulated and divided costs. And I see that, at least in my field, I see that as a mistake that bookkeepers make frequently.
Okay.
And so the shared costs is sort of what that's called.
Right. Um, Kristin, anything else you'd like to add?
Nope. Thank you.
Well, so we have about 20 minutes. I've kind of gone through my list, heard from y'all's list. Anything else we should cover or any other, um, any other thoughts? Well, I'm happy to close this a little bit early. Um, if we feel like we're good and we're, we're done with this one. And then, um, Amy, what is the rule? Was Felicity sharing her notes with me? I mean, I took notes throughout this meeting. I think I captured it, but I just wanted to check in and see if she's allowed to share her notes. Maybe Amy has a question at the moment. That's okay. I'll find out. Um, and I know, you know, Felicity, you mentioned a couple of times, we do have those other questions kind of out to DOJ. And I don't know if we have an update on, uh, any response for those.
So the, some of the questions, um, that were asked were fairly general and, and DOJ did their best to provide responses to those within the, um, the presentation that they gave. But there were other questions that are very much asking for legal advice. And DOJ is only allowed to represent the state and provide legal advice to the state. And this body is, is not included in the entities that DOJ is allowed to provide legal advice to. So some of the questions, we can't provide legal advice related to, to answering them.
Okay. So Felicity, I think that goes to your question is like, can we know the feasibility of our recommendations? And it sounds like, no, we cannot. So we will be submitting recommendations with no understanding of the legal feasibility of those. And that will all, question will only be answered to legislators, it sounds like.
You could certainly talk to the legislatures about what you're intending and they can talk to ledge counsel. Because ledge counsel provides legal services to the legislature.
Could, that's helpful. Cause we have two legislators on
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
This body.
Also DAS can ask us questions.
Could, can DOJ say, I cannot answer this question. I said, I mean, I sent a lot of questions. Um, is DOJ allowed to say like, not this one?
Um, it typically yes. So I'm in a little bit of an odd spot because I am just a member the same way that everyone else is a member. I was appointed by the Attorney General. Um, so you would need to have DAS ask their representative, their DOJ representatives. And then those individuals could provide an answer, uh, potentially um, to whether or not they can answer specific questions.
Okay. I think, I mean, based on what I'm hearing, I imagine the best avenue might be to work with a legislator.
It's probably the easiest.
Okay. Thank you, Kristin. I appreciate the clarity.
Yeah, you bet. Um, and it, this actually brought up one more thing for me. Um, you know, one of the reasons that you all see so many different things with different grants is that, um, each of the grant programs, like every single grant program has different requirements under the legislation that enables the grant to happen. Um, so one of the things that is, you know, at least a potential to be looked at is streamlining the statutes as much as possible related to grant funding. Um, because the more streamlined the legislature is in what they say when they grant money, the more capability the agencies have to streamline the grant templates and, uh, documents that you all see and that come to you. So.
Would that be like, like a template of like, like, I'm going to use all the wrong words, but
No, 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 it's okay.
Would it like, uh, generic language that we would encourage legislators to use in any bill that ties to?
Yeah, it could absolutely be that. Yep. That, that when the legislature What was that?
No, I'm just, I'm wondering if, I think that sounds like something we should explore for our recommendations. Because I, I think that's a, a really good point that it has come up before. And this is a helpful reminder of that sometimes legislators put stipulations such specific.
Yep.
But, you know, pretending capacity is no issue. You know, if someone's tracking all these many bills and those that have to do with contracts, like be like, hey, representative who's championing this bill, like, can you please add this language? So there's flexibility on the grant side.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then, um, you know, another, another place for involvement and engagement on the nonprofit side, which I, my experience has been that nonprofits are really great about engaging here, but not necessarily bad reminder is the RAC process, right? When the, when the agencies actually engage in the administrative rulemaking related to the statutes that, that allow for the granting of funds, um, the more involved the, uh, nonprofits are. And I realize that it's, you know, more time and effort on your part when you're not getting paid for it. Or, you know, the, the compensation isn't, isn't sufficient there, um, which is one of the things that we're trying to, to address with this task force. But, um, it, someone, and, and even maybe, you know, there's, there's room for there being one or two people within the nonprofit, uh, sphere that are super well-versed in this area. But, but the more involved you can be in the RAC process, um, the better chance you have of getting some of these things streamlined. Um, and I will say that, you know, there are, there are, and I, I think this goes to one of the points that Leah made earlier is, you know, the, the makeup of the nonprofit, um, populations for, that the different agencies are working for can be very different, right? Like crime victims can be very different than education, can be very different from those entities that are seeking natural resource grants, you know, to, to build ATV trails on state parks and those kinds of things. And, um, and sometimes the agencies can get really like locked in with their particular stakeholder group of nonprofits. Um, and things can, can get really specialized related to meeting the needs of those stakeholders. And I think that that's probably one of the things that happens relatively often. And then when you have an entity that is, and for instance, um, you know, housing and community services has been providing funds for state housing for a long time. And in the last biennium, OBDD or Business Oregon and OHA have now entered that sphere because they've been given money related to housing. And OHCS and the whole housing sphere has been revolving around this small group of stakeholders and really catering their programs and things like that to this small group of stakeholders. And I can, I, I'm absolutely seeing how difficult it is for these stakeholders that have been working with OHA and DHS for a long time and with Business Oregon for a long time, um, you know, kind of combine or, or try and come into the sphere of housing. And our attorneys are working their, their, um, faces off trying to, to, you know, get, get everything in line. But it, uh, that it, this is just another reason why having things brought on the legislative side or having, um, kind of stock language for statutes that are granting money can be really useful and helpful.
Yeah, Amy.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I was muted before when you were asking me about distributing your notes. I'd be happy to do that if you want to send them to me and I can distribute them individually to folks so that we're not messing with that public meetings law. So I'm happy to do that.
Thank you so much.
Amy, you might want to ask about that because I'm not sure that we bypassed the, the public meetings law piece by, um, having the notes go just, you, you might want to check about that because it, the, that particular piece of law has gotten really sticky lately.
Okay. I'll double check. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much Leah for your time. Thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think feeling like we're closing. Um, so a little 10 minutes. Um, hopefully, you know, if you have a 10 o'clock too, a little transition time. Um, but thank you so much for being here this morning and for all your input.
Thank you Mercedes for getting us all organized. And thank you to Kristin and Amy for supporting this meeting and answering lots of questions. So hope everyone has a great day.
Bye. Same. Yes. And thank you Mercedes.
Thank you, everybody. Bye-bye.